They don't know if they want to weigh in on it this time. So, it's really up to the local communities from the ground up to make the point.
I would think that from a home rule standpoint, they would have weighed in on it. Or should weigh in on it.
From a home rule standpoint, they probably do, but as far as the legislative priorities coming out of the committees, it was not discussed. No, they're just now touching sea level rise. So, I mean, I think what he's saying is that it takes its time to really get to that level where the, you know, the support base is there. I mean, it's just really discouraging that our state and federal, you know, it's like, we're the low-hanging fruit. So, you know, you're here trying to get us mobilized to fight it, but it's really concerning when, you know, our state legislature and then the, like what she was saying, once they have the permit, there's no oversight. I mean, it's sad that they even support that. I mean, we try to be so conscientious in what we do here, and it, when you hear things like that, it's really worrisome that, you know, once they get their permit, they're out there and it's free rein and they can do whatever they want. And it's really disappointing. I mean, I don't know how much lobbying your groups do, but that you can't make any inroads in that vein either.
It's tough. We don't have a real receptive audience in the legislature.
Keep in mind, one of the issues that here, and this is the point I was trying to make out there, so many different types of deposits that you go into this tertiary type oil recovery. I think that fracking is too general of a term. Technically, what they were doing down there, they claim, was not fracking. What they were doing was acidizing and opening up the pores without physically fracturing. So, in conventional oil drilling, you sometimes also do acidizing wells to reclaim and reclaim, but it's just not on that type of volume.
Oh, okay.
So, the point being is, is what we call, what we're trying to call fracking here, somebody might interpret is not fracking. And I think that's why it gets confusing, and we need to be more encompassing to protect just who controls the mineral rights within our own neighborhoods.
He'll get it.
Well said.
Yes.
I sort of picked up on some whispering, but we do not, at least in my packet, do not have a model ordinance regarding the oil fracking drilling in my packet.
We have a resolution.
We have the resolution for the air gun blasting.
Yes, and a couple of things. Typically, what the legislature does when they're going to do something to preempt the local governments, like what they did with the short-term vacation rental, is that they will grandfather in ordinances that were in existence prior to the adoption of the state legislation. So, if we were going to do something in way of an ordinance that would prohibit, would either prohibit or restrict it to certain zones, or whatever it is that we could do, which I think would be a good suggestion to adopt that prior to the conclusion of the legislative session. I don't know that we would need a lot more information in terms of how to draft that ordinance in a way that wouldn't make Puntagordo the model, the test case for any of the industries that challenge such an ordinance. The example that I recall was when cell towers was the thing that a lot of local governments were adopting ordinances to prohibit. And there was a lot of litigation against municipalities that without having the appropriate supporting documentation tests and all that, simply by blanket prohibition, prohibit cell towers in the area, the major companies would then sue the municipalities, establish case law that would then be used as precedent against the bigger municipalities because the smaller municipalities didn't really have the financial resources to do the studies, to do the fights, and do what needs to be done. So, if we were going to do something, we would have to figure out how to do it in a way that was effective to us, but also didn't make us the test case, which in some great respect kind of dilutes what it is that we could do. Your question or concern about establishing mineral rights is a totally different issue from establishing an ordinance that would tend to regulate or prohibit an activity that we don't have enough data yet to be able to support if it was challenged. So, we need to kind of, not saying we can't do it, but if we did it, we would need your assistance in preparing a really good ordinance. With respect to the seismic air gun stuff, the resolution that was provided by, in the packet would be sufficient for us to adopt. Question though, what was the result of the EIS that was done regarding the seismic air gun testing?
The, as it relates to impacts to marine mammals, these were the results of the test. So, this is from the Department of the Interior Environmental Impact Statement. One of the many challenges to the environmental impact statement is that it did not use the best, most recent and current science involved. And that specifically is what the state of Florida addressed in the letter that they wrote to the Department of the Interior requesting that this not be permitted off the coast of Florida.
This identifies what impacts were found. What were the, and I think what you're just suggesting is that perhaps the conclusions of the EIS were not satisfactory to prevent a permit from being issued.
Correct.
And what is this, is that being challenged, or is it final? What is the status of the EIS?
Yes, it is, it is being challenged. And the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management Director has stated that this, the decision will not move forward without additional consideration. Decision is expected on whether permits will be issued, both in Florida and on the Atlantic Coast, by late February or early March. And that's the status of the permitting process right now.
Well, I don't see any downside to adopting the resolution. I would suggest that we could do an ordinance on the, for want of a better word, fracking, but we would need much more in the way of backup before we, I would feel comfortable adopting an ordinance like that.
I think, based on your comments, I would feel more comfortable with a resolution on fracking than an ordinance at this time, because I really don't want to put us out there in that position that you described. Really hesitant to do something of that nature. So, if we could possibly do something similar for the air gun and the fracking, I would feel way more comfortable with that at this time.
With more information, we might then be able to take the next step.
Well, that would be part, yeah, that could be part of the consideration if there was, you know, consensus to do that.
I'm okay with that. If you can help get some more information.
Absolutely, Meta Mayor and Councilman Levin. Good points. What I was going to suggest, if you'd like, is we do have the Benita Springs Ordinance Accord that was adopted, and we can provide that copy. But more than that, we can also, Jennifer Hecker, who is the Natural Resource Policy Coordinator with the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, which is another member organization of the Florida Coast and Ocean Coalition, actually resides in here in Charlotte County, she would be happy to provide the necessary information, perhaps if Joan LeBeau is going to be your point person, to provide that information. She worked directly with Benita Springs in fashioning that ordinance. So, we can, with all the resources that you need, we will provide, including legal assistance through Earth Justice and also Ralph Brooks, the local land use attorney. They provide the same comfort level to the Benita Springs community and the council.
I mean, I would like to do it. I think it's important to do it. I just don't want to put us in a, you know, litigious situation.
I see nothing wrong with the resolution on the impacts of the seismic air gun blasting right at this point. I would like to hold off on the fracking until we get to look at an ordinance.
So, maybe what we could do is get the Benita Springs ordinance, just have a cursory review. You could, you know, look it over and we could go about it that way, and you could give us some additional advice on your thoughts and feelings and...
I mean, that's, that's great. I don't want to, you know, if there's anything we can do on the other, did you say that there's a bill pending or introduced in the state legislature regarding the fracking?
Fracking? Yes, sir. There's a Senate and a companion House bill, but there, and that bill, as I said, is to preempt local governments from enacting regulatory.
As a stopgap measure, we can adopt a resolution opposing that proposed bill.
That preempts, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then with further study, maybe there's more that we can do. I mean, the best way to do it really is if we had a basis for restricting it from a zoning perspective, and then putting the burden on the applicant for the rezoning to demonstrate that it would not harm the environment, you know, in a very vague way, but more specific requirements. That would be the way to go as opposed to a outright ban on it. And so, yeah, I mean, I could see us adopting something if we could get a little bit more information that we could put into an ordinance relating to zoning. But what is the, what is the, I think you mentioned something about the likelihood of our geology being a prime candidate for this.
No, our, the likelihood of our geology of being a secondary candidate. The prime geology right now is in Lee County, column. It's down there, and that, they're doing that right now. But when you look at the probabilities of additional deposits that would be exploitable in the future, if you were to say the dark, the dark side is right there in the middle in the Everglades, but it literally goes further up north and west, and it does touch the Charlotte, Charlotte Harbor. And in the, it goes through, it's in Lee County now. I mean, they're doing some drilling in Lee County now, so it's getting close. And those deposits that are possibly here, I mean, they're not definitive, but there's a high likelihood there's deposits around here, let's just say that. And there, at some point, as those become depleted, then there could be the possibility of us having some exploitable deposits underneath our very feet as we speak right now. And I'm just saying this is that from a preemptive standpoint, and I am tickled pink that I've got this conversation going, you have no idea, that if we can do something now to help protect this, if it's 20 or 50 years from now, I don't really care, but to set that precedent, and also to set a precedent, or to also be on the record for our habitats, both in the ocean and the Everglades, which we are indirectly dependent upon because of our tourist engines and so forth. That's really where I'm coming from.
Yeah, so, you know, so what I'm hearing...
And if it's just a zoning issue, that's fine, as long as it accomplishes putting a roadblock in front of that type of development here in Puntagordo.
So, there is a realistic need for it way down the road, but it's not, it's not a fictitious need. So, you know, I...
Can you supply the maps, otherwise we can dig them out.
Yes, we can. You refer to the Sunnyland Formation?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir. We can provide those maps.
Yeah, and you'll see that we get to the edge of what they are pretty confident of.
So, that would be something that we would introduce in the, in our preamble, whereas clauses as to why it's necessary for us to create a zoning district and criteria for. And so, I would be comfortable in establishing an ordinance of that, of that nature.
Nancy?
A question to, I guess, Gary or to Mr. Judah. When you say we get to the edge of that Sunnyland Formation, where, where is that edge?
The suspected edge is we're at the edge.
And we'll provide those maps to give you a good visual.
Yeah, and then we can, when we move on with this, we'll have all that in our backup material that we can...
It gets into your neighborhood for sure.
Okay. Well, I actually, I actually know...
Did I say that right?
Yeah. Thanks. I actually know the person who owns the mineral rights under PGI. And so, that person is very, is a very entrepreneurial person, so...
Okay, so, we'll move on and get us the information, and we're, we're in support of the resolution. You see, using the same languages?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're all okay using...
And are we going to do something opposing the bill?
Yes, we should do that, too. Could we oppose the potential bills that are already out there? If you can send Joan or David the information, we can do a resolution for that as well.
Be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we are moving on to request to temporarily waive the special exception requirement for installation of small amounts of artificial turf.
Terry.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. When the last request, the special exception request for artificial turf came through while I was out, it was brought up that the process was way too arduous, especially for a small request. I do have the topic in general on discussion for Planning Commission this month, as well as a meeting with the LDR Committee to obtain more input about how large of an area, where, and that sort of thing. However, I did receive a call from a resident.
Lives on.
We keep getting this.
He lives on Colony Point Drive, new home, built a couple of years...
Pardon?
No, we're, we have an error on our, yeah, it goes away, but we're good now.
Okay. And he owns a couple of dogs, and he has a fenced area on the left side of his yard, and his neighbor has areca palms that keep that area shaded. He has re-sodded it three times, and because it is generally damp and shaded, the grass just won't grow there. And so, he had contacted an artificial turf company and just thought, well, maybe I should call and ask first. And so, I explained what the process is, and he says, "Oh, I'm living with mud. I'm so tired of being dragged in the house." So, I did talk to Howard, and he said that it would be okay to put it on the council agenda to temporarily, until we find out exactly how we want to craft an ordinance, to waive that requirement for special exception if it's a small area such as this, so that we don't have to put people through that process.
My thought was that it was going to eventually be incorporated into the landscape plan. That was my hope and thought, that if it was a small area, we could still manage the quality of the product, and that the fact that it's going to be secured some way, because I think those are the two main concerns.
There were a few concerns that were raised when it was originally discussed, I believe, in 2009. One is that of the infill, that we don't allow the infill materials because it has the potential to get runoff in the stormwater.
Right, the rubber, yeah.
And, and so, those are the things that...
Or the sand.
We would, we would still like to have no charge zoning permit, so that we can review, make sure we've got the materials, the maintenance, and the correct installation process for it. It's just not the public hearing process where we drag it out for three months for somebody to go through.
And is he planning to hire a contractor to do this work, or is he doing it himself?
He was planning on hiring a contractor. The one person that he did talk to didn't have the proper weight, and I did explain that to him, and I had given him a couple of names of companies that, that do have product that meets the criteria, that he could possibly talk to if this was approved.
Because I think, you know, professional installation makes a huge difference. So, if somebody's hiring somebody to do, and they meet the criteria, I don't see, I would not have to see them coming back for some kind of fee or review.
I agree. Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm okay. The, and I don't have a problem with that. Was there, I didn't see anything in the memo that indicated that they would still have to meet the criteria for the special exception. It just would be waived for certain size, for example.
Yep, the, so that they didn't have to go through the public hearing process. The criteria that is already laid out for requirements for any artificial turf, staff would like those to still be requirements that would have to be met for even small areas of artificial turf.
I just wanted to make that clear as to what the intention of the council was, whether the criteria would still need to be met.
Right. Yes.
They just wouldn't come to us, they will come to you.
Because we're trying to prevent somebody from going to Home Depot, buying that stuff that's on the roll, and plopping it down in their yard and saying, "This is my yard."
Right.
That's what we're trying to prevent.
Good.
Right? Yes. Okay, good.
It's all good.
It's all good?
Got it?
Okay, recommendations from city officers, city manager.
Well, I was curious. I wasn't going to say anything, but then, it's kind of nice up here. Do you think Howard would buy it if I said the council decided that the finance director also has to sit up on the desk with the... Brad, he's not here, but he wouldn't mind moving this, the panels around again. And I could squeeze a chair in.
You can have my seat, how's that?
No, no, we, we'll find room. I can get a nice chair, and do you think he'd buy it? Other than that, I have nothing.
I'm not supporting that.
Thank you for being so understanding. You have been very kind to me in our individual meetings, and thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Fine job.
I have done no harm. I have done no harm. That was the rule, I went with Howard. No harm. That's all I had, thank you.
City attorney.
The judge in our Shell Creek case has accepted the joint request for continuation of the hearing to allow us to have our settlement agreement worked out. I think we are required to give him a status report in the middle of December, and from what I heard, the county commission was going to consider the agreement itself.
I think next week.
I think next week. I have not seen it yet, but I assume there won't be any significant changes of oil or plate language that would be in such an agreement, and hopefully all will go well.
Are they discussing that at a county commission meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be...
Are they doing, okay. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
City clerk.
Yes, under boards and committees, announcement of vacancies. We have an unexpired term as an alternate on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, an unexpired term on the General Employees Pension Board. We have two, three-year terms on the Planning Commission, one unexpired term on the Utility Advisory Board, and one unexpired term as an alternate on the Code Enforcement Board. Under nominations, we have...
Wait, I have a question. So, Mr. Hoffman was here, and he wants to discuss with you his absences, and that's his seat that's being advertised. So, we're, how does that process normally...
Mr. Hoffman was sent a letter, which he did not respond to. However, we're just announcing the vacancy, so I would encourage him to submit something to the clerk in writing that can be forwarded to council for your consideration, for an appeal of that forfeiture.
Okay, that's basically what I told him, so, okay.
Okay, under nominations, we have an eligible applicant for a two-year term on the firefighter's pension board, since we have one applicant, if you'd like to nominate in a point.
Nominate a point.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. Bill Albers to the fire pension board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie unanimously.
Does he know they have a dress code?
Yeah, he'd have to wear Hawaiian shirts and three...
We'll let him wear whatever he wants. We need him to have...
Ooh.
Okay, under appointments, we do have one item, and your voting forms are being distributed. You're just voting for one, please. Sorry. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Policy and legislation mayor, we have big week, Founder's Week coming up. It's going to be really exciting. I'm glad that Gene, not that he canceled his trip, because he was going to Paris and France, so he was here this morning to let everybody know what's going to be happening in Puntagordo. It's happening on the harbor continually, especially this time of year, and the December 4th downtown Christmas celebration, I have invited the city employees to come sing one of my Christmas carols. So, I'm hoping to get support for that. I need like 15 or 20 people. And you're not going to be singled out, you're going to be in a group, you're going to have accompaniment with a guitar and a keyboardist, and they're going to be singing along with you, too. So, it's going to be totally fun, I'm sure of it.
Any poems? Are you doing poems?
No poems, not yet, not yet. I haven't gotten there yet. So, it's going to be a great night.
So, that's a hint, hint, is that correct?
That's a hint, hint.
Are you asking us?
I've already asked you, and you responded.
Well, I've said yes. I haven't responded yet, and I just wanted to make sure that was a hint, hint.
Yes, that's a hint, hint.
Okay.
So, I need some fun, festive city of Puntagordo and poems.
Absolutely. I'm in.
Okay, good. And we're singing, do you want to know what we're singing?
Yes.
Rockin' Around the Christmas Tree.
All right.
Brenda Lee.
I sing solo, solo, no one can hear me.
Well, you can be in the back. You can, you can air guitar, how about that?
Oh, that'd be cool.
Yeah.
I'd like to have a little air guitar performance by some people.
It's going to be totally fun and exciting, so if people like it, then we'll try to do it again next year. And if nobody likes it, and nobody shows up, then it's, it's done. So, I think that's it.
I love it.
Yeah. Cool.
Great, great. I think it's going to be fun.
I think it's going to be fun, too. Okay, council member comments. Kim?
I wanted to remind everyone about Friday. We have the Havana Nights, and that's for the Blanchard House. And we have Ken Roberson's dinner.
Saturday, we will be there.
So, we'll be there for that, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
I'll be going to Colorado for grandparents' day.
Are you going to get into Colorado? They got up to 12 inches of rain.
One way or another, if I have to get Santa to take men on his sleigh, I'm going to Colorado.
It'll be gone, it'll be gone in a couple days.
I'm not a, yeah, exactly.
They said it was melting pretty, pretty rapidly. I've got family in Colorado Springs, and they say it's melting.
In Denver, it goes away. And the, just not a discussion, but are you going to let us know about our, for Founder's Day, our tour of City Hall?
Yes, we're, Mikael is working with Gussie and Teresa Murtha, and they're putting together the stories, and they're quite colorful.
Okay.
So, what we thought we would do, instead of everybody trying to, we're going to station you in a place, and then you'll have a story to tell about the painting, or where the fire station was, or Mr. Hatch, who's in the lobby. So, we'll each have our little station and our little card, and, I mean, at the beginning, we didn't think anybody would show up, but I think we might get people.
Oh, yeah.
I think we might get some people.
Oh, I do, too. It's going to be fun. It's going to be a fun, it's a great event.
So, it's historically accurate as Gussie Baker says it, remembers it as.
She used to slide down the banister if she told me.
That's what she said, and she used to eat, pick the mangoes and go upstairs and eat mangoes up there. So, we'll have, we'll have little, we'll have the information for you. So, do the right thing, is at 3:00, just plan on Stan. We think till about 5:00.
Okay.
And then they're doing the luminary of downtown, and then the history park will also be open till 9:00 that night, too. So, there'll be plenty of options for people.
Yes.
Tom?
Couple of things. Tomorrow afternoon at 2:00, staff and myself and the committee, the board committee will be meeting to discuss construction, and our acting city manager will be signing a notice of commencement.
Sweet.
Woo-hoo.
We're going to get that thing done by...
Yeah, you got it.
Awesome.
Move ahead.
Yep.
Also, staff has completed their review of Joe Boff's property, the Grand Harbor Development, in terms of whether there was enough space on that property to accommodate the maximum density that he's entitled to, and also to install the amenities, pools, tennis courts, and so on like that. So, that has been completed. Staff will be contacting Grand Harbor shortly and have that conversation, and we will see where it takes us.
Thank you for doing that.
Other than that, have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving. I have to throw in the Go Gators, because I won't be seeing you before that, that weekend. Carrie?
I had the opportunity to attend a water forum with Tom Jackson, and Tom's not here right now, so I can say anything I want.
He can hear you, he's in the cry room.
Oh, he's in the cry room, okay.
He's already crying.
Tom, I owe you, I owe you. Anyway, a couple of things that came, came away from that forum that are, I think, say that you guys have been going down the right, the correct path for a number of years now. The fact is, is that, one of the themes was, is that Flor, South Florida does not have a water shortage problem, it has a water storage problem. One of the solutions is, you're going to really like this one, David, is to have storage facilities, holes in the ground, that can be pumped out of in emergency situations. Okay, that was number one. Number two is to have a diversity source, a very diverse source of water. Tampa Bay was used, and they have three or four different types. We're now going to have three sources of water here fairly shortly with the development they are planning. It is, it is pointed out that water will be the next oil, that for economic developments and economic engines, water is going to be a, the primary source that may determine where a business can or can't locate. water is going to be a, the primary source that may determine where a business can or can't locate. And we're just positioned very well to just have a nice, healthy, controlled economy the way we want to do it in the future. So I just want to share that.
Am I hearing that we should encourage mining in our wetlands? I was going to ask if they talked about whether or not those reservoirs would be mined or unmined.
They did not. They, they did not. They did not specify.
I mean, that's, there's a big difference there.
Yeah, there is. They did not. They did not. They just talked in terms of storage, et cetera, and quantities of water.
Thank you for that. Thank you for attending on our behalf.
Thank you.
Well, I got, fortunately, my committee meeting was, didn't have a quorum in Fort Myers, so I could go to Sarasota at the same time.
Good deal. Yeah, I will look forward to representing all of us tomorrow on Ken Lovejoy Show.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And have a happy Thanksgiving. And we'll be.
You're going to talk about Founder's Week, obviously.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. That's going to be a big, a big part of, of what I would talk about. Typically, what I do is I go over the last month's worth of information and prepare a long list of information for him and email it to him ahead of time so that he has an idea of what to discuss. So then we can have more of a, a dialogue. And that's what I would do when I was, would be on the show with Team Punta Gorda, is give him a list in advance. And that way, then it's just not him saying to me, so what else? So what else? So what else? Yeah. So then I, I give him that, and then it makes it flow a little easier. And so, but I, yes, Founder's Day week is a, is a big one to talk about.
Mention Havana Nights too, will you? It's going to be fun. Salsa, cigar rollers.
That's Friday night, right?
Yep, at Harold, Harold Court.
When, Gary, when's your first stint on Ken Lovejoy? I want to be sure to tune into that.
I don't know yet.
Okay, we'll have to find out. We can't let us know.
I think, well, we got the list. I think.
Yeah, we do have one.
I think he has a couple of months, so, you know, just to get used to.
So I got you a couple of months to get warmed up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, now we're moving into citizens' comments. Anybody who would like to comment on any topic now would be the time. State your name.
Well, in support of what these people had to say about the fracking, I'm, I've been a resident of Michigan for many.
State your name again, please.
I'm Salvatore Sam Castrenovo, Seminole Lakes, Punta Gorda resident. I've also been a resident of Michigan for many years, and fracking has been common in Michigan for many, many years. Part of the problem with the fracking there is that they are using water and pressure and chemicals. And disposal, disposing of the water tainted that chemicals, what, I'm going to say that again. Chemical tainted water that they're using for the fracking is a problem. What they've been doing is deep well injection. I guess they're probably aware that the EPA had a rulemaking open for comments. My comment was make them treat the water. Don't, don't go hide it someplace. And I think as you do your, you know, your review, you might be wanting to think about that. You can't, you know, putting it down there is for something, for someone to have to deal with someplace down the road. And with regard to deep well injection, you've probably read, I think there were three articles that I saw, and there may have been more concerning Oklahoma, where there has been fracking. And they didn't determine that fracking was really a problem, but Oklahoma was allowing them to do deep well injection. And U S Geological Society has tied that deep well injection to the increase in earthquakes. And believe it or not, Oklahoma has more earthquakes than California. And it's been tracked, tracked back to the deep well injection. So something to think about. Also, probably you may or may not have seen my letter to the editor concerning the Arrow Plant, which I continue to oppose. I think, you know, it's going to cost each resident $3,000 to pay for that plant. And I guess the way you people might be looking at it is, well, we're going to get half of that money from Swift Mud. That still leaves each resident $1,500. I think the recent rate increase is the tip of the iceberg. And I know they've done studies, but we shall see what that turns out to be, what it's going to cost us on our utility bill to pay for that thing. And its operation and its maintenance. And as I mentioned, I think you should be looking at things on a regional basis. You're going to have to build that pipeline. That's going to happen if you're going to get the money. And so that's going to bring water down here from Charlotte County. They have an Arrow Plant on, on Burnstour Road. That water could be used to be blended. And they're not blending it out because that's the only source they have with the Shell Creek water to take our part of the problem that you have. You may have to expand it, but I think you need to look at other options. $30 million is a lot of money. So thank you, and thank you for your support on those two bridges.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Ray Rose? Okay, we are adjourned.